All right, so everybody ready? All right, if we can all stand for the pledge, it'd be really appreciated.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, let's call the meetings order at 6:32 AM. All right, roll call, Mr. Riley.
Here.
All right, Mr. Zambou is absent. Ms. Garber.
Here.
All right, Ms. Ranzazzo.
Here.
All right, Avrin here. Mr. Weaver. And Mayor Waram.
Here.
All right, can I get a motion to accept the absences of Mr. Zambou?
I'll make the motion. Support.
Support, all right, all in favor? Aye. Opposed? Oh, Dunsmore also, yeah, Dunsmore, thank you. And Dunsmore is absent also. You all good, Amber?
Yeah.
Okay, everybody get a chance to take a look at them, tonight's agenda? Any adoptions or amendments?
No.
If everything looks good, then I just need a motion to accept tonight's agenda.
I'm going to motion to accept the agenda.
Okay, can I get a second?
No, I don't have one.
All right, I'll second it, all in favor? Aye. Aye, all opposed? Okay, citizens' comments. I got a lot of them today, so we are going to do a five-minute time on that to make sure you get your point across, five minutes, I'm going to time you, I'll give you one-minute warning before the end, and then 30 seconds, that way you guys at least get through. First on the list is Mr. Fields, he was the first sign in. Let me get a second here. You got your clock ready, Amber, you got a minute, what do you want?
Hold on, sorry.
Fuck.
Okay, ready?
All right, yep, go ahead.
Jim Fields, 802-63 Bell River Road. I submitted a package to the commission to be distributed, I don't know if you got it, it was in before time to meet city standards, so you should have had it. Again, it's the same maps that we did when we did this last year, showing where the actual setbacks were on this. Since this proposed, has five areas that are noncompliant, it's showing the density of where your vehicle count would be. This vehicle count, if you stack it up, is the average national laid out on the roadmap, it'd be very similar to pickup times in front of the school system on Borden, when they're doing the nightlies, and then AM pickups, this is the city zoning map, we've been over these things before, I've shown you the density maps, you have all these things with geometric figures showing how this unit actually stacks out. I've gone back and I've read the BMJ engineering reports, where they raised serious questions about the lagoon capacity, also with all the reports from Mr. Dunsmore, saying that they should have it professionally analyzed because they're predicting 107 to 117 people added to that lagoon, lagoon capacity was already in question with the existing site condominium building. This plan is noncompliant five sections of the ordinances. So you've got a height variance, you've got a setback variance, you've got a density variance, you're looking at your lot widths, you're looking at your building lengths, and then you're looking at your actual, you have a couple of them are five. You know, I understand that statewide and M squared, they're a private enterprise, and a private enterprise can operate under a different set of standards and procedures that a municipality is required to operate under. The city is a municipality, therefore it has its own rules and procedures and rules and how things progress and they go through. Now, it is their job, as a private entity, to work within those rules, but also work in their favor. In the documents I sent you, I sent you recaps of all the minutes and pertinent meeting agendas with the votes, citizen input through public hearings, where they pointed out these things, there were concessions made, you know, Mark and Mike, they agreed to maintain the back lot, that's in the meeting minutes. The detention pond is brought up various times, where it is required in phase one, that's all part of the meeting minutes, it's all there, it's all part of the public record. When you're in a public entity, you need to abide by what that record is. And there's been a lot of times where plans have been made, or arrangements made outside of what the recorded history is. The recorded history, like I said, is black and white, and I will stand by any statement, any inference, or I've been accused of assuming things. I'm not assuming things, I have black and white, I have the public record, we have the minutes, we've looked at all this stuff, so, you know, these guys want to make money, the city wants to make money. You know, you've got a $1.3 million infrastructure project that will have to happen on that back lot, just to provide the water and the sewer necessities that are going to be in there, and then they're going to share about $500,000 just to the grading and the paving of that unit. The infrastructure of the city already, as we had at the DPW meeting, is failing in areas, and there's contributing erosion problems and flooding on existing properties with the current construction that are not being addressed. Now, this has been brought up for a year. Those things are shared between the detention pond and the functionality of the swales that were proposed in the engineered prints, and part of it is city infrastructure that's failing. This has been brought up, it's not being addressed. The city really needs to take that into account and fix their infrastructure before the developers' instruction company fixes their side of that, and then it's left back on the city's infrastructure that's actually failing. There's property damage happening, it's been recorded, so, I mean, when I look at the prints...
30 seconds.
What's that?
30 seconds.
Okay. I would suggest maybe deny the prints submitted for the noncompliance and setback heights, lengths, density per the code, remind the developer of the votes in the history of this project, address the drainage and erosion issues, review lagoon capacity, and ask the developer if they commit to maybe some approved agreements to work on the city's infrastructure, maybe some green space, because there's nothing provided for these future residents.
That's fine, thank you.
All right, next we have Tina Manachuk.
So I agree with everything Jim said. The other thing I'd like to address is that I live next door to the property where the road will go in, the grass ordinances are not being followed. You may think you're right about your grass ordinances, but I can tell you that I met with someone today that told me I am right. That when you start talking about premises liability, talking about slips and falls, that is a piece of property and people are responsible for it. So they are responsible for the grass, just as if it was a sidewalk there. There are homes on there, it is a condo, it is one D, it's been looked up, it's been founded, and it's, we're talking facts, not feelings. There are 14 homes that they built there. Two, I am allergic to the noxious weeds that are growing there, and I am sick, and I've been put on one, two, three, four, five different meds in the last week. My doctor will write a letter. I am tired of being exposed, it is not right that I have to miss work, miss funds, and be sick, or have to pay for medications or be on medications because of their lack of duty. They must justify why they want to build those homes there, over and above the ordinances that we have. Money is not the issue, because as many people have already spoke, they've been open about what they paid for the homes, we gave them a decreased amount on the TAP fees, because they were going to only sell them for $200,000, they were sold for $300,000, from what I understand, that is what I was told. That's all I really have to say. And I think sometimes they're rude, when you try to talk to them about it, and we are the people that live in the city, and I've lived here almost now a decade, and I'm just sick and tired of it, it's disrespectful. I was told that those weeds were not noxious, they're obnoxious. Thank you. Thank you.
Okay, next we have Chris Manachuk.
Do I gotta go to the podium?
You can stand wherever you wish.
All right. I think the plans that's submitted should be denied, just on the fact of the ordinances that are being violated. They want to change the 30-foot setback from the rear to a 20-foot setback, where's the water going to go? There's no drainage located between the buildings, the road, and my property line, so I am a little concerned about that, especially seeing as on the other side of the property, how they got the houses up three feet, and you can actually just look at the land, just angling right into his property line, and flooding his property, flooding his barns, and meanwhile, they're going to do the same thing there with the 20-foot setback on my property. I think that's wrong, I don't think it should be approved. Also, I didn't see anywhere on there, we talked when they originally came here, and we're talking about rezoning it to multifamily, it was posed to Mr. Demille that would he put a fence along the property line for the road, I do not see any property or fence along the property line for the road. I do believe that it should be separated due to the fact that now I am going to have a road next to my house that's going to be busier than Main Street. I think the density is a huge issue, 68 condos in there, in an area, there's no area in Memphis that would be that dense. I think that you're going to create more problems than you're actually looking at, but whatever. And I also don't think that we should be jumping any hoops for this developer or this builder, they have shown no respect for our city. The first, when they were building the sight houses, they trashed the street, they were leaving garbage in the street, they had boxes and crates everywhere, it took news articles, it took going to the media to get them to clean it up. On top of it, they can't even cut the lawn. I don't care, we can talk about legalities and all this other stuff, the right thing to do is to cut it. If that was next to any of your houses, you'd be upset. When the wind blows, the leaves from the dandelions just go straight across our yard. I mean, it is ridiculous. That's all I got to say about this.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay, next we have Mr. Steve Weaver.
Coming up, Ed Sisum, tonight. I have not done that through the four-year process, but I wish to do that tonight, and just give a little perspective on my personal opinion as a resident, and somebody who lives in the middle of this, I look at these people across the street, these are my neighbors, I drive those streets every day. Now, to begin with, I've always been very disappointed that this did not come before the planning commission regularly get go. I don't care what you want to call it, conceptual plan process, that purpose is supposed to be brought to the planning commission for their review and a meeting to provide verbal comments and suggestions of the concept plan, and the direction regarding future submissions. That was never done. Why do I know that? Because I was chair on the planning commission, I never saw it. What I got was a package that had already predetermined, the city was going to exclude the builder from responsibility for building sidewalks, the city had already decided to have to tap these. I don't want to make this mistake further again, that was definitely a mistake, an out of order. 2021, I wrote a letter after receiving this initial package, outlining a few of my concerns, they were very simple. We need to file the easements, it's 2021, we need to build that pond, we need to execute an HOA agreement, and these issues were pointed out many times, you can go back through the records, on and on, I put them in writing, I put them in, you know, on the record here. I came to this as a disinterested party, even though I'm right in the middle of it. I was told I was the liaison between Mr. Demille and Mr. Steva, and I talked to them quite often, we worked together on a few issues, sidewalk easements need to be moved up, we had some open areas that were irritating people, and we had the weed issue. And right from the beginning, I said that that drainage, we've got a three-foot elevation there, we have to do that, we have to keep up that land, land management, first thing, and they repeatedly brought this up, and it's not been addressed. Meanwhile, we keep stumbling around, trying to determine where are we? Is this a plan, preliminary plan, conceptual plan, is it the final plan? I want to make sure that's clarified tonight, and I will ask those questions tonight when I step down from the podium here. But the drainage issues, the management issues, vacant land, no sidewalks, I address those, and I would give statewide, they're due, they did compromise and put sidewalks on Pratt, which I'm happy to say, and we are going to connect those sidewalks to existing homeowners, they don't charge them at some point. That's really been the only give and take that I've seen through this process, and somewhere along the way, as the representative from the council, to the planning commission, to the builders, I stopped receiving calls, nobody seemed to want to work with me anymore. Now, I'm just bringing up issues as a disinterested party here, and I'm sure everybody has their own opinion, and they like to, you know, have their side win, but everything's a negotiation. All of a sudden, everybody stopped talking to me, and I was a little offended by that, actually. I mean, I've been trying to work, you know, you guys know who I am, talked here at the beginning of this process. So I hope we can get to the bottom of this, I want us to move forward, we have to quit wasting this time, I submitted to the planning council and to the city council, there's 49 pages here, I went through all my homework from the last four years, and pointed out the concerns I have, and the process as it unfolded, if you want to get out your ordinance books, you want to look it up online, it's there in black and white, what needs to be done, and we need to respect the law, are we a country of laws, or are we not? Are we going to exercise our right to self-govern, or are we not? My primary concern, I have no ill will toward builders, people wanting to make money the American way, however, my first concern is citizens of this community. I ran for that purpose to represent them in 2022. So I'm going to continue to do that, even though many people may disagree with my tact, my virgige, my attitude, but I am trying to do what's best for the city, and that's just my take as a citizen. That drainage has never been the same since, I've lived across the street for 25 years, and it's not.
Thank you.
Okay, next we have, I think it says Bob, I can't read your last name.
That's me. Because I really live on the corner of Bell River and Pratt, 37 years, I love this town. Never had a flooding issue whatsoever, my backyard's never had water, my fire's never had water. The house next to me is about 50 feet away, it all goes right, three feet up, right into my yard, right into my barn. I had water a foot deep in my barn, my lawn equipment, my snowboard and everything was under water, took me a week to clean everything out. The secondary was the same way, the ditch out front of my house is a major drain, three feet deep, it couldn't keep up, I had water six feet from my garage. Haven't had it since I've lived there. I've done everything I could to come to the past few meetings to express this, I hadn't heard anything since, and everything I hear is, we're working on it. We had some rain last night, got this morning, looked, water puddled right by my barn, got home tonight, before I came here, it's gone, but it's in my barn. It all drained right into my barn, all day. So now I get to go home this weekend, open up my barn, and get it cleaned up again. I can't wait for this off-summer to be fixed. If that's the case, I'm going to take pictures, take pictures and bring this to the meetings, but I'm just a citizen there, I didn't, you know, I'm not ready for the next level of all this other stuff, three feet high. I have a river running through my backyard of dirty water, never had that for 37 years. I'm all good for, you know, progress, but it can't happen like this. And the neighbors next to me had water, I can't imagine the water that went in their yard, if it didn't, it would have went through mine, and had water in my garage. So I can't put up with this anymore, I need answers, I need it to be fixed. They built dolls next door, put it all up, dolls balls run right into my yard, right into my barn. And that's just where I was, a little bit of rain like last night, I still have flooding. And we didn't get much, and I know we're going to get more this summer. And I've had heavier rains since I've lived there 37 years than what we've had, I've never had all the water in my backyard.
Ask them.
And that's where I'm at. We need answers, and we need to get it fixed, or we have to go to the next stage, I don't know what else to do. And that's all I have to say.
Can I get your last name? Can you spell it for me?
RID-D-L-B.
Okay, and what's your address?
34551 Pratt.
551, okay. All right, thank you very much. Okay, next we have Heather, is it Paris?
Paris.
Paris, I'm sorry.
Heather Paris, 34515 Pratt Road, we live next to the new construction, and in front of the new construction, I guess, we have it on the side and on the back, we have terrible flooding in our backyard, along the whole side, it comes up, it's come close, I mean, I understand there's not a lot of rain, but it's not ever been this bad, we've been up there 27 years, it's come within, where it could probably be within one or two feet of actually coming to our house on that side of the house. It doesn't drain, there's still water sitting there, I cut the grass last Friday, I think in the front yard, it's wet up, because we have the ditch that runs between our house and the new construction, it's still wet on our property enough, where I probably shouldn't have even been cutting the grass, because if I'm stepping in it, it's soaking wet, it's just not draining, there's, I know there's weeds in there and whatever, but it's just, it just sits there. It does flow when there's heavy rains, but other than that, it just, it just sits there. I've been complaining for, I want to say at least two years, on various issues, starting with the weeds, when no construction was being done, that were five feet tall last summer. I was told by, I don't know, the builder, I asked him in person, probably, I think when we had a meeting on Pratt Road, like, can you please keep the weeds down, like, it's just too much, like, because our properties are right there, so the weeds are right on the other side of the fence, they're five feet tall. I don't have the equipment to take down five-foot-tall weeds. That was taken care of now, because we have, obviously, neighbors, but the problem is, is the house next to us is three feet taller than our house, so it's the one behind us, so when it rains, it's coming in from behind us and from the side now, so it's obviously flooding more than, you know, it would have in the past, so, obviously, we can't do anything with that back corner of our yard. And I, that, our house is supposed to be, we're very close to where the detention retention pond should be at, that is nonexistent, but basically, it's just, I can't imagine that it's not going to be filled with mosquitoes and whatever else for the entire summer.
Thank you very much. Okay, moving on, actually, can we get a motion to close the citizens' comments? I don't have any more sheets here, so I think we're good there.
I'll make the motion.
Okay, and I will second that, all in favor, closing citizens' comments? All right, aye, all opposed? All right, moving on, received, I believe, each one of us received a copy of a letter from Mr. Fields to our planning commission, I'd like to enter it on communications for the record. We need to vote on this, or we just want to enter it in there?
I'm going to make it part of the record.
Okay, and I will second that, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, we'll be entered into the record. It's the 21st? Okay, moving on, new business. The whole purpose of this special meeting today is the statewide preliminary plan submission review. It was a special, noted discussion meeting, and that's what we're all here for. I think everybody has seen the planning. And I guess want to open up some comments from our commissioners.
Can we clarify, is this the same plan that's been submitted before, or have there been any changes on it? I've been asking that, and I just want to clarify here, because I don't know, if there's not been any changes, yes, I'd look at plans, but...
I believe it's the same set your engineer approved.
Okay. I just wanted to clarify.
It hasn't been changed since we submitted for preliminary set plan.
So there have been no changes on it?
No.
There was changes from March 20th, correct?
No, I believe so. March 20th was the application.
So we're clear, this is just a submission of a preliminary plan?
That's correct.
Okay, so we're starting there, great, okay.
So my question that I can point out for you, the plan that was submitted prior to that, and there was a conversation in February with a couple of commissioners, just regarding some of the issues that were had, that's what was corrected and resubmitted, correct?
I believe it's the same plan, I just can't say it for 100%. The same request for variances will accompany this request this year.
Anybody else have any questions? Well, mine is...
Do you want to address the developers?
Yes, absolutely.
I didn't know if you wanted to talk more to suchers. Allow me to introduce myself and who's here on behalf of the developer. My name is John Eadie, I'm the attorney for the project, also with me is Michael Demille and Mark Skiba, they are partners with the developer statewide Memphis LLC. Mark and Mike are also partners in M Squared Builders, which is a separate company that built, I believe, all of the homes along Pratt and, and Bell River Road, in the first part of Memphis Meadows condo. So I thank you, Madam Mayor, thank you, Council for hearing us tonight, we really appreciate the time and here to answer any questions, hopefully clear some air and move on to the process along. You have questions, or I can make a presentation if you'd like.
If you want to make the small presentation, just to reiterate on a couple things, that's perfectly fine.
Right, so, this has been sort of a unique situation in this development, originally the plan was brought to the city some five years ago, and sort of a two-part plan with a single family along the two roads, multifamily in back, it was built in phases, and at some point it was determined to do it as two separate projects, and sort of the same, sort of cousin projects instead of brother-sister projects, just in terms of timing, how long it was taking to do the Bell River and, the Bell River and Pratt Road project. The multifamily portion of it was submitted and reviewed by the planning commission in December 2023, December 29, 2023, in a meeting in which, six steps back, the property was rezoned at a meeting of the planning commission and later city council to allow multifamily density on the property. Then, in December 29, 2023, this commission approved what it called cons... Then, in December twenty-ninth, twenty twenty-three, this commission, uh, approved what is called conceptual approval of the property. That caused a little confusion. Your, your planning ordinance has sort of a three-step process. The first step is a little unique in our experience, and that is this conceptual approval by the planning commission. There's confusion whether that led to the next step of a final approval. It does not. Because the next step is this tonight, preliminary site plan approval. In the meantime, um, for the city and developer and their various contractors, it happened as if it had been a preliminary site plan approval. Engineering was reviewed, or completed, excuse me, it's planned, it's planned, by the developer's engineer. It was reviewed by the city's engineer. Uh, comments went back and forth, and it was approved, approved by the city's engineer in twenty twenty, spring twenty twenty-four, I believe. Uh, additionally, um, permits were granted by the county and for sewer, water, and, um, the roads. Uh, it was determined at that point that we had sort of gotten the course of the fun of the cart. So now we are back making sure that we follow your procedure to make sure this plan is properly approved. Um, step one is this preliminary approval request. Uh, we are aware that there are a couple of issues that need, uh, variances. And in your ordinance, uh, provides that at this preliminary stage, we present the plan with the understanding that these ordinances will be applied for from the zoning board of approval. Your consideration can be made with or without, you know, taking any consideration, but we can approve this plan subject, we may approve this plan subject to the variances or changes that are suggested by the city. Um, we had a meeting in this very room, I believe in February, with a couple of, um, members that was committed to this council, a couple of members of, um, city council, I believe, and city attorney and the mayor. We discussed these issues at length. Um, a lot of, um, questions were made about, uh, building heights, road widths, uh, and setbacks. We've gone back and forth with the city in correspondence with Mr. Aherne, um, with Mr. Francis, with, uh, his, where?
Where?
Where. Um, and, and we've gotten, made some progress. I don't think we've gotten fully there in the, uh, variances we need. Um, there's a question about building height in the plan that we submitted. Um, the ordinance required building height to be measured one way. The city was measuring it another way, which is not consistent with this ordinance. And, um, so like, we were, the plan says it's thirty feet to the top of the building. That's not how you measure a building. You measure it to the middle of the roof line. So we believe that that was a compliance. There's a question about whether the road was wide enough, and we cannot have, um, a determination of what actual type of road it is. If it's the road that we believe it is, and under our engineer term up to be, um, road width is sufficiently wide, twenty-four feet, because this is the road, we believe this is the road, it's basically a glorified driveway. It's not actual road, it feeds the road system. And there is a division in front of me here. It is called a marginal access street. And a marginal access street is only twenty-four feet wide, so we believe it fits. So we don't know if we need variance or not. If it was determined that, that's not agreeable, and, um, we do need a variance, we would apply for it, but we would argue otherwise. We believe it fits in under that portion of the ordinance. Setbacks, um, we agree there are a couple of setbacks that we need variance for, and we intend to apply for those variances. Those are rear yard setbacks and a couple of different areas. Um, and the length of the building, I believe there are a couple of, the buildings are a couple of inches large, too long. Whether we apply for that as a variance now or at the time of applying for the building permit, those variances would be applied for as well. We understand that there have been some issues, um, raised to this council. We understand there have been some issues raised to the city council as well. Complaints, um, one of our issues, and I'm not gonna come here and wag my finger, uh, but there have been a number of meetings about this project in which we weren't invited. And it looks like that we're not here to answer questions. And this is having, I've brought this up at other meetings, we've brought this up at other meetings. Not to surprise most of you, but to citizens, maybe it is. We're not ducking any sort of complaints. We would be happy to be here, answer questions. I may not be the answer to you on here, but we'll answer questions, we'll talk, um, give our information, so it's not something that we're trying to hide. Um, I understand that during a building project, it can be very frustrating to the residents. There's, there's dirt, there's contractors around, there are people who are not normally in your neighborhood. We understand that. Sometimes that gets, be a little too much, and we understand the frustrations that come with it, but, Mark is a qualified builder for many, many years. Um, we believe that he built the front part in quality manner in a manner consistent with professional standards. Um, we got a letter talking about catastrophic flooding. Uh, we walked the property with the mayor the day after a rain throughout a couple of days. We've not seen pictures, um, with your barn. First I've heard it, it was tonight. Uh, I don't know about Mr. Mill, but I'm sure, first he's heard of it as well.
That's right.
But not some pictures, not some video. Catastrophic flooding in my mind is something that is catastrophic. And that's not, and that was, language used by a member of this council to us, so I don't think it raises that level. We are here to answer any questions you have. The presenter was, we believe is a good plan, which engineer believes is a good plan. We are ready to go forward on this project. Once we get the go-ahead, the potential pond will be dug, the swales will be up, a lot of grass will be done, and weeds will be gone, and building will be going on. This calls a lot of these issues. If you have any questions, I'm here to answer the questions. If you know.
You receive no pictures, Mr. E.
I have not received a picture of flooding.
I have, I have those, they've not been sent out yet because I was waiting for, for this.
We did request any materials that may be shown today as well. I'm not saying anything, so we're, white, white, but we're happy. There'll be, my thing is, is the planner involved, attorney involved? Has there been opinions on any of these issues submitted?
We have talked with our attorney. Uh, we don't have, I guess, we don't have anything that we'll be presenting, just talking between us. So I don't, as far as pictures or anything like that, we don't have that.
Well, I guess I, I'm, we have this weed problem, we have this flooding problem. This gentleman has never had water in his barn, and now after thirty-seven years, he has water in his barn. Are, are you proposing that we just wait for months until maybe the grass, maybe the weeds will be gone? And maybe there'll be a pond dug so that he won't have these issues anymore? I'm not understanding.
First thing we needed to know is that there wasn't an issue. We just found out about it, um, seven minutes ago, so. We didn't know that about your barn. That's the truth. We did not know. I don't know where you knew. I don't know where anybody knew, but who knew seven minutes ago?
I was at a meeting two or three weeks ago. I had brought this up about the flooding. I have plenty of pictures that I can show you.
You can have them right here now. You can send them to me. We'd be happy to, again, discuss them. But again, the meaning is issues are brought to the tension of the city, the planning commission, or the city council, and we were not involved, and I'm notified, yeah. So it's, it's, there's a little bit of frustration on that part as well, but, no, I'm not saying that it's just like a parcel go to waste if it's not proved, but the quickest way to get things done is to move forward. We've been banging on the table to go forward for over a year, almost two years now, and we've not been able to get anywhere else.
Well, we can't go forward wi- without taking care of the problems that are existing now.
Those problems are festering because we're not.
You know, how could we put more people in the community and push more of that water toward
Everybody.
Poor people that have been there for thirty years?
Well, we were told by Mr. Weaver that he stated that.
That's bullshit!
Try, try to keep it civil.
Sir, I, I understand your.
I'm, I'm not bringing the meeting.
I'm sorry about my language.
Please address the council. They want you to answer questions. I'll answer.
Oh, I thought, I thought he had it open forum. I'm sorry.
I believe right now the questions are directed to us.
Okay.
Okay. Mr. E has a word on it. You, I said, go ahead, Mr. E.
Am I responding questions?
Yeah, if you like.
Okay, I'll respond to questions. Um, question, please.
Me?
No, no, gentleman with a hat.
Sure.
Yeah.
Give it to me.
Well, state your name, please, and your address.
Any other questions?
I live on Pratt Road, three, four, five, three, one Pratt. He lives next to me, actually.
Okay, okay.
He gets the same, but.
So.
Water.
So you three are the neighbors. You're the one on this side here. Okay, I got, I got the orientation now.
See, now, we've all been there for years. I mean, so you're gonna throw us underneath the bus for more revenue? Screw you!
Excuse me?
Please, please keep it civil.
I just wish you would do something proper.
Let me, let me put, let me put a pause on this right now, okay? This is a public hearing, okay? We're all here trying, you know, we need to be civil. We're adults. Let's act like adults, okay?
All right, I'm sorry.
All right, if, if you, if you can't contain yourself, then I will ask you to leave, okay?
Yes, I understand.
Thank you.
So I'm gonna answer what I think was your answer to the question. Why should we continue this without addressing the issues that are already there? Is that fair representation of what you have?
Yes, in much ways.
One of the, um, issues that we have, obviously, is we don't, aren't able to respond right now to an issue that's really been brought to us tonight. This issue on the corner with water near barn. I don't know if water's coming onto your property. Uh, there is drain that goes between number ten and the house next to it, so drains into the drain. Um, when that house is finished, it should be draining without any issues. It should take care of a lot of it. I don't believe that house is finished. Is that correct, Mark? So there's some work that needs to be done on that yet.
Yeah, I live in that house that's next to the one that's very high up there. Um, I've been complaining about the flooding for at least a year now, so you haven't heard anything about that.
No. I did, let me take that back. We've heard that there's some, some grumbling, but no more specifics.
So, so if you finish the house, how's that gonna stop the water? You're just finishing the house? I mean, it's. Well, once it's graded, that. Graded? You might wanna get over it because it looks like it's ready to fall into the ditch. That's how much water we've had lately. I mean, if it degraded, where it's gonna, where you gonna grade it to? To my house? The ditch has. To the field? At this time, to it?
Correct.
The ditch is there every last time it rained, and it still hadn't helped the water in my area.
Have we got a part of the rain today?
Yeah.
Is it like that right now? I mean.
Well, the water.
I was just there.
The water is, is, you know, it's not right now. This morning, before I went to work, there was water raining. It's all dissipated. But it's still, you know, I've got pictures of, like, a couple of weeks ago. It was a decent rain, but not a lot. There's, there was water. You can see it right out from, from the field, coming right down through our properties, down next to my house to the ditch that's in front of my house.
So, um, and this is not the answer. I was going here.
Wait, let's stay at it. You're saying the water's coming from behind? The field. I got pictures of. That field. I've got pictures of the lake. And the house that you haven't pictured yet. It goes uphill to your house on the corner. It doesn't go up there. It goes down this way to the, to the east, behind these people's houses, behind mine, to the ditch that runs in front of my house. Not front, I guess, on the east side. That's higher than.
Right, it's higher on the road than it is.
That, that ditch we're talking in between ten. I can show you pictures of water.
You're more than.
I'm not, anyway, it's just, I'm, I'm getting water now. Where, where is it?
I'm gonna give you an answer, as, like I said, you always wanna hear, but I'm an attorney, as matter of developers.
Oh, sure.
We're not engineers. We're not water engineer, hydro engineers. This project was designed by some of the leading engineers in the county, um, and reviewed by the city's engineers, which is one of the leading engineers in the area. They've reviewed the plans. I believe they inspect, finally inspected it or not. They have inspected it. Um, so we rely on experts to do this. That's not, I don't draw pictures and say this is where the water's going.
Sure.
Like, doesn't do that anywhere. It has to be approved by experts, and it has to be approved by the city's experts as well, so. If there's a problem, you know, these are people that we may, maybe need to go take a look at it, but we gotta make sure what the problem is.
If you look at the house next door, great people, but it's three feet higher, and their lawn comes right from the top of the block to my yard. And that's like, they ain't going in there. It's all running right down into my yard.
If it's high, which it is, I'm sure it probably does.
It's running off of there.
But I don't think it's coming from the ditch now. It doesn't go up yet.
Their downspouts are running right down into.
With a couple of great shots, we could figure that out real quick, and it's not going.
Well, the, the heavy rains, the, the water was coming that way. I can show you.
It's, it wouldn't flood, but I don't think it did.
I'm not laying a spec either, but I just know I have water now.
I guess I have a, I have a question. Um, obviously, you know, I understand you guys aren't water journey experts, but you do have more experience than I do. Um, how fast, let's say we deal with this retention pond, but how would you think that that would change the flooding? Obvi- like, would that take care of the problem?
It's supposed to hold the surface water. It's the whole purpose behind the retention pond.
Right.
It's supposed to let it off in a controlled flow so that it doesn't flood not only you guys, but guys down the way, and further down, and further down, and further down, and further down.
That's me.
So.
Well, the retention pond isn't in yet, right? So that's what we're talking about, is a retention pond that doesn't exist right now, so.
So my follow-up question is, um, let's say things go this plan, this week, we start construction ASAP. How fast is that pond going in?
Well, I did that.
Where, like, what, what phase of construction is that?
That's one of the first things that gotta go in with the mass grading. So the mass grading will happen, pond will go in. We have to have somewhere for our own people that are doing the work. Otherwise, they won't be able to do it because now they're reducing the level of the grade to get the top soil out of the way, creating a bunch like a soup bowl, right? So they can't work in a soup bowl. They need the water to disperse it. They're gonna put that pond in up front. It's got, it works to everybody's benefit when you're on a construction site to get the water into a spot that needs to go. So the weeds will be gone, water will be gone, well, water will be contained, as I should say. And we should not have any of these issues that you're speaking of for the most part. Now, if there is an issue that comes up, that's why we have heads on our shoulders and we'll address it. I can't, I'm not a fortune teller, but I do believe that the engineers, both yours and per se ours, did their work, and that's what they do for a living. So I'm assuming they know how much water comes on a piece of property, and that pond is sized appropriately to accept that water. It is.
When, when and if this all gets approved, things go the way they're supposed to, final, final plans are all done, um, how fast after that would, would construction start? Are we looking at six months, a couple days?
As everybody has jobs and it's how they make their living, we weren't waiting for this based, you know, we have a year and a half now we would be starting. So we're, have other projects in, in the pipeline that we are on. Once this gets approved and once we get started, the actual construction time to do it, I think ninety days? I mean, they, then we both won't be in ninety days. But the, the rough will be done, the pond will be in, and maybe some stone will be going down for the road. Underground should be, so long that the product is available, and that's been another issue recently with everything that's going on in this world, is getting supplies of the storm, the.
Catch basins.
Catch basins, the, the sanitary, the, the, the ductile iron, the, you know, the plastic, all that stuff. So, so long it's available, out of the actual work time, from tip to tail, max, I would say six months. Now, I'm watching rain every day when I say that, and then you'll say, oh, but if it doesn't rain and things go as normal, yeah, six months should be to the outside of shooting that complete project. I mean, that's. Especially the roads. That's wrong, yeah, that's just the infrastructure.
Right.
Infrastructure, not built out, no.
Infrastructure.
We had, we didn't put a nail in yet at that point, yeah, right.
And then when would you, um, apply for the variances?
The variances, if you, as soon as you, uh, give a preliminary approval to this plan, variances would go in. I'd have to talk to your attorney about where, what variances we'd have to ask for. We're still not quite clear about that, but we know at least there's five, um, that we would need clarification on. So we probably might draw five and then withdraw as well. Believe me, he's pushing me so fast that I'd, I'd have to have it out by the end of the week, so.
I hope we're able to answer those questions.
Mr. Riley, do you have anything?
Nope, she'll cover it.
Mr. Weaver.
Yeah. I'm just glad that we're all up here, we're all talking. It's almost great. Good thing. And the notice that we got for this meeting does state, this is the preliminary plan review. So we're all agreeing, right? This is preliminary plan review, because there's been a lot of confusion over that.
There has been.
And the steps.
Yeah.
So I'm very happy that we're all clarified on that point.
You are where there was a conceptual plan meeting in December twenty twenty-three. You said there wasn't, there was. I have.
Regarding that, regarding that meeting, Mr. E.
Yeah.
Twenty, in December thirteenth that year, we had a meeting, so conceptual plan review, we fought. We did not have a forum. We convened another special meeting on December twenty-ninth. And we did, uh, look into what we did there, and it's pretty much agreed from the council that we have gotten that, uh, that was simply this conceptual plan.
I don't disagree with you.
Okay, I mean, you just laid out my timeline here. I wanted to make that clear, that we did not approve any preliminary plan at this December meeting.
I never said that. You said there was no conceptual plan meeting during your comments.
Okay, so we're agreed then?
No, no, we're not agreed. There was a meeting for conceptual plan approval in December 29th.
A conceptual plan?
Yes.
And actually, we don't even have to, you know, approve a conceptual plan. So we were kinda off track there anyway, according to our ordinances.
That's right.
Uh, however, we did send it out to city council from there, saying, "Yeah, the concept looked okay, even though we didn't have to, it was just an extra step." So I just wanted to be clear and on the record for that, because I, you know, I do recall that. I haven't missed any of these meetings, so.
I'm, I'm, I watched the meeting on YouTube, and I will comment to the council that your microphone is too close to your bathroom.
We'll take that into consideration, Mr. Eadie. Thanks for pointing that out. And we'll keep, we'll try to keep the quorum in that, absolutely. All right, so I'm glad we're there. Back to my point, I'll be very brief. I'm not gonna belabor this side by maybes, or, but let me do it again while everybody's here, so maybe I can be persuaded. I'm old, unachievable, okay? So we really looked into, at the planning commission, it's been very diligent. We're trying to understand this process. We have kind of many orders, as you all know. And that order starts at 150.0050. Now, when we're, now that we're talking, we're agreed to the preliminary plan. You know, 150.107D, the plans, you know, the city reviews and approves, and there's a recommendation by the planning commission that'll go to the council before any site improvement starts. I'm just going down through the orders, and then I want, if anybody on the planning commission has a different idea, but please don't, so that I can be corrected. So the compliance for the breaks now, when we get into 1.107 there or 150, uh, it's like four components. And the way we had it, a little confusing, conceptual, preliminary plan, a final plan review, we're not even there yet, and a final construction review. Those are the four reviews that we call for with the law that we have in Memphis, Michigan. So this preliminary plan for 105.109, we be filed to city clerk, which I assume you've done. You filed that, that plan with the city clerk, right? So we've got that box yet.
Yes, Mr. Weaver.
Were you hoping to say, "I wanna know what my next target is here and try to, you know, work it out"?
Mr. Weaver, yes. You know, you've got the plan right in front of you.
Okay, I'm, I'm just asking for clarification.
There's no clarification needed.
Okay.
We're here at this meeting.
Am I not allowed to ask you this? Yes or no? I mean, I'm, I'm wanting to be, I really wanna be sure of what I'm looking at here, okay?
You know, the honest thing, can I say something about this?
Can I finish, please?
Oh, no, go ahead.
You can have all the time you want.
Sure.
They wanna get, you don't wanna finish my point here and get through this, okay?
Sure, but...
But I wanna, I wanna continue. I got the floor right now. I'm not being rude, Mr. Dunbar. You have, let me go, let me continue.
But you're misleading the characteristics of what you're saying, because what we did...
Mr. Dunbar, may I?
You're misleading it.
Mr. Chairman.
You're not, you're not able to finish my point.
Yeah, just hold on, Mr. Dunbar. He has the floor. Let's move on with that right now.
Good.
Allow him to finish, and then you can reiterate after that.
So be fine. You have your spot.
Yeah, I have no problem giving anybody, you know, a minute.
It also says, when you, when you submit that preliminary plan, you, you submit a check that's gonna cover all the fees. I don't know if that's been done or not.
We asked the clerk's office if there was a fee. They were told, we were told, "No."
Pardon me now?
We asked the clerk of this city whether there was a fee. We were told, "No."
Okay, uh, I'll take your word for that, but our ordinance requires otherwise. All right, so let's move on.
Your ordinance doesn't have to be, you also don't have an application. Not a sandal. You don't have any of the paperwork here. So like, that's the problem here. You don't have any of the paperwork, and that's why you're misleading the characteristic of what you're saying. I appreciate you saying that.
I'm giving you my perception, Mr. Dunbar. Please, let me finish. I got, and you can go on as long as you want, as long as he wants to listen.
I'm okay with, as long as we keep it civil like that, I'll just cut the meeting short and be done with it.
So since we, we seem to be lacking some structure there, I would, at this time, for the planning commission, make a recommendation to city council to authorize a reasonable sum of money, and I don't care whatever funding mechanism they choose, to put our planner on retainer to review this preliminary plan, and when that, when and if that timeline arrives, whenever that may be. Because right now, we're just gathering information, and, you know, we have to talk to whoever we wanna talk to on this. We're gonna be looking all of this over. This is the way the ordinance goes, and this is the process I hope that we're involved in, in the right now. And the review includes input from the attorney, engineer, city officials, plan, the city department heads, other sources we may seem, you know, the city might seem true. So I would highly recommend that we have a planner ready to review this plan when it, when it comes up, after we gather it all, because there's a few steps that'll happen. And I'm just saying this to clarify case for all of you, for the homeowners here too. So if I'm understanding the process right, this is what's going to be happening in the future, so you can know what to expect. I would also like a, a recommendation from the council to ask specifically about this detention pond and put this issue to rest. There's an awful lot of confusion about that. You know, I've got three prints. Each one of them shows a detention pond. That's from February 21. This is the one that's on file with Macomb County, their condominium plant, 1231, the number. That has a detention pond. There's a little highlight that says, "All structures and improvements shown in the plan either being structure or must be built." This is a further plan that's dated 2/23/21. That shows that detention plant, pond for the first phase, and the expansion area, and all the easements. So I've looked at these, so excuse me if I'm confused, but I'm detention pond, I am. So I would really like to, to inquire from the Macomb County Public Works that you don't have to build a detention pond for the plan you filed. I just want a simple answer, and I would recommend that the planning commission ask city council to do that. If they say, "No," great. But I don't really know what side of the fence come down on that. It's been very ambiguous, to say the least. And I would further like them to affirm or deny, Macomb County Public Works, if it's your responsibility to approve the detention pond to cover Phase 2 of this expandable project. That's how it was filed, expandable condominium project, correct? Which tonight's the subject of this meeting. So I, I would really like the council to move in that direction. I'll recommend it to them. They can do what they want, but I certainly would like to have a planner ready to review this, because we've wasted a lot of time. And I wanna move the process forward, gentlemen, I really do. I've been very disinterested from this beginning. I was happy to entertain having the city grow. Uh, and as you state, 109C of 105 section, we may require the applicant to go to the ZBA. So I'm sure we're sending it to the ZBA. As you've acknowledged, that's our prerogative to do that. And then after we've done all that, we will review the entire plan, see if it's compatible with the roads, the master plan, the density issues, the impact statements on road, where all that, have our professional planner review it, then notices are sent out to the greater community specifying, this is 105.109D2, specifying the time and place where they can come and look at the plans and give their input. So I'm on board with all of that. To get us to that point, if we can get to that point, I think we might have some, we might be able to move a little quicker. So that's, that's all I have to say on that.
Can I address that, please?
Yes.
Oh, you're not interrupting, it's all you.
I'm gonna ask the council, um, do you receive these filings beforehand, or do you just get to read for the meeting?
The what?
Do you get these filings at the meeting date, or do you get them beforehand?
Files?
Files.
The what?
The package.
The package. You have a package? You have information what's gonna happen at the meeting?
A couple of days before a meeting.
Usually supposed to be sent out, Mr. Eadie, by Friday of the, the week. So all I got is this.
So you're making this in our plan, of course. Uh, March 20th of 2025, we filed a proposed site plan for the village. Three large copies included. A copy draft of Pro's master beating bylaws for preliminary approval. We were noted that there was gonna be a public meeting for discussion on the preliminary approval of site plan. Now you're saying, "Tonight, we're gonna send this off to our planner."
I didn't say tonight. I said at the appropriate time.
Yes.
But we're gathering information on preliminary plans like our ordinance says.
This was brought up at a meeting six months ago. You said, "Let's get a planner." I was at that meeting.
And we have brought it on, bud.
Everybody stop, everybody stop, listen.
We have.
What we are doing tonight is we have everything. We have talked to our engineer, we've talked to our attorney. We are ready to look at all of the ordinances and decide if the criteria has been met or if it hasn't. Tonight, we are deciding whether this is approved, this is denied, or it's approved with conditions. We have been through all of this, over and over and over. We don't need to get more information, we don't need to talk to more people. We have it all right here. I have all of this. So we, there does not need to be a fight. Everybody can be civil. We, we can move forward, and we can talk about what the variances are, what the plan does not meet, and what our issues are. They will know all of that tonight. When they leave here, they will know what's going on. We are prepared to move forward that way. So everybody needs to relax. I cannot handle the high tension. Can we move forward?
Yes.
Because we have to move forward, because this was originally brought in in July of last year. The planning commission did nothing. And then when I came in as a mayor, I'm like, "What, where am I standing on this?" And that's why I had a meeting with our attorneys, with their, with the developer, the builder, and we went through all of this. And I thought we were gonna move forward then, and they submitted the plan, and, and now certain people are acting like they were never at that meeting, and it's unfortunate, and I'm tired of hearing about the retention pond, and we just wanna rehash all the old stuff. Not saying that I'm, you know, not saying that some of that stuff doesn't matter, but there are things tonight that were said, that I've been the mayor since November, that I did not know about. I've never heard about your house. I've never heard about the flooding at the other house. The ones who came last month about the flooding on the east side of the river, we had our DBW looking into it. So I don't, we're not, we're not, not taking care of anything in the past, but that's what we're here for today, is to look at this site plan. We're not going back and asking for more information, more information, more information. Like, we have to, we have to do this, so.
Well, we have the three outstanding issues for the zoning board of appeals. I would recommend we send that to the zoning board.
That's exactly what it needs to be.
That's, that's exactly right. So let me kind of, um, say where I'm at with things. Um, so this, we got a plan at some point in fall. At January 21st of 2025, our engineers reviewed it, and they said, "Here are the issues that we have." They had the right-of-way issue, the roadway issue, sidewalks, the front yard setbacks, and the unit parking. So we, at some point, all of that was told to you guys. So you guys were aware of, of the engineering issues that we had for Memphis. Then it was resubmitted to us on March 20th of 2025, where you, as an attorney, went through and said, "Here was, you know, your arguments to the things, where you believe that the, the ordinances did match the plan." I took that, and because our ordinance says that our city attorney, if there is a issue with the way either side is interpreting it, we rely on our city attorney. Uh, so I did take that to him, and he has provided, provided us with some answers. So I want to be very clear about where we are at. I have gone through everything as far as what our ordinances are, what the plan meets, and what it does not meet. I am confident that we have these following issues, um, that you're gonna have to talk to ZBA, because really, our only, that is the planning commission, we have one job, and that is to read the ordinances and put the plan with it. We need to decide whether or not it fits. I have my own feelings. Everybody here clearly has feelings. Whether or not we believe a plan is good for the town, good for us personally, whatever it is, we have to set that aside. If the ordinance says that it fits, it fits. We have to follow our own ordinances. And unfortunately, that's, that's where we're at. I understand that that's upsetting to some people. I wholeheartedly get it. Um, I was born and raised in this town. It's, it's, it's hard to see change. It is what it is. We're all small-town people. I'm sure you guys can all relate to that. However, when somebody brings us a plan and it fits the ordinance, we have to move forward on it. The, the plan, the conceptual plan, all of that has already been done. My job here tonight is to read the ordinance and decide whether or not it fits, and if it doesn't, here's where it needs to go, and here's who you need to talk to next. So that's where we're at. I understand everybody's feelings, but we need to refocus, and, and that's where we need to be, so.
Good.
Ms. Mayor and council commissioners, I apologize for getting a little excited. Happens, I don't like it happening, and it will not happen again. Uh, just a little information that I left out of what we talked about between the engineers' report and my letter, we did have a meeting with the city attorney privately, not a, not a public meeting. We discussed all these issues and sort of where they fit in, and that's where we came up with our response.
If, I mean, I'm comfortable, if he wants to sit down and we can kind of talk about this, where we're at. Yep. I'm fine with that. All right, so, um, as obviously you guys know, I kind of came on the planning commission in March of 2025 and had to catch up very quickly with what was going on and where we were at with things. So, um, I'm very fortunate, because Mr. Dunbar, who's now a council member, he, I, I feel that he had pretty good grasp on things, and he really put together a lot of things that are very helpful for tonight, um, being kind of a checklist of things where, here's the criteria, has been met, has not been met. So I've gone through the preliminary review, just everything that needed to happen. Uh, the builders have provided what, what we needed to provide. The, the issue that's been raised tonight is that, okay, you know, the application, there was not like this proper application, there's not this fee schedule, they didn't, they didn't pay this amount. When I came into this, I also did not understand, and that was part of my confusion originally, is like, why haven't they paid this amount of money? I didn't realize enough, it's just like, didn't have a fee schedule. We're square mile, we've never had condos before. So hard lesson learned. Moving forward, things are probably gonna be different. But, um, from what I know, things have been paid as far as all the fees that have been associated with having this plan, reviewing this plan, whatever it is, it's all been paid. So I guess, is it really that big a problem that they didn't come up with a $10,000 check or $15,000, whatever it is? It is what it is. Like I said, hard lesson learned. Moving forward, if we have another condo project we have, we're gonna do things differently. So, um, that's not an issue that I'm, um, I think is the, is a problem tonight. Going forward, um, you know, we've had the opportunity to review the plans over and over again. Um, we've also had the opportunity to send those plans to our engineer. The engineer stated, like I just said, "Here's the issues that we have." And I was able to send to our attorney, Mr. Francis in Port Huron. I wanted his, his take. So here is where the plan does not fit our ordinance. Um, so we have a setback requirement, and the way that he explained it is that, he interpreted it to mean that the applicable side yards, uh, setback is increased by one foot or a fraction of one foot for each 10 feet in length of the dwelling on the parcel that has access of 40 feet. So if the building on the lot exceeds 40 feet in length, the minimum side yard setback would increase by one foot per side for each additional 10 feet in building length. So, what we have with this is that our requirement, and this is section 150.059, subsection B 5A, this requires, I'm sorry, the rear setback of 30 feet. That same statute requires a front setback of 25 feet. Same section, but subsection B requires the increase based on the overall building length, requiring the buildings to have a 1 to 12 side yard of 17 feet, which is total being 34 feet. And the buildings 3 to 16 of the plan to have a side yard of 19 feet, a total of 38 feet. So there we go, right there. This is the variance that will need to be decided by ZBA. And this is for our setbacks. So, the next thing, the next question that we have is obviously our right-of-way, the streets. And there was, I consider this to be a couple more issues than, or I should say, the bigger issue of it all. Just because there was a lot of wording that I wasn't sure. At some point, it's called like the marginal minor, then it's called like the multifamily. So, that, I think that's what threw me for a loop the most. Now, our attorney interpreted, and this is looking at, I'm sorry, this is looking at 150.117. This is 151.03, subsection B. And 151.36, subsection C 1. This says, and this is where the discussion comes in on to like what kind of road it is. Obviously, this is a multifamily unit. We're looking at multiple condos, multiple families are going to be living within this same area. So, our attorney actually describes this as a multifamily residential street dedicated, which is the pavement width being the 56 feet. Which obviously is significantly different from the marginal street being the 35 feet, the marginal minor street that the builders had proposed, I'm sorry, being the 24 feet and they had the 35. So, streets are also going to be something that has to be sent to ZBA. And that's going to be obviously allowing that right-of-way. The next thing is the on-street parking. The variance would have to be either waiving the on-street parking. And I think that is, from my understanding, that's kind of already a plan, that that's going to be a thing. And... Then, oh, the next question is, I guess, about the sidewalks. The five-feet sidewalks is in question. So if you're getting the variance for the right-of-way, to include the sidewalks or to not include the sidewalks. The, what, that, I should say, the 56-foot width does not include in the ordinance. So that would be a variance that you would have to request as well. For the next, which it was kind of already talked about tonight, was the building height. Our attorney believes that, okay, just from, this is a question. How are these roofs? Are they not flat roofs? What do they call?
Pit roof, there's a name for them.
Pit roof.
No, no, there's a name in that ordinance form.
Is gable?
Gable.
Gable.
What is it? Oh, okay. Again, I don't build roofs, I don't know. It is the average height between eaves, and that's pretty clear in the ordinance. So, I do think that your interpretation of it is correct. However, this is still the 25 feet. So I still think that it does go above the 25 feet. So a variance to be 26 feet, to be able to allow that, is required. The next, the next thing is the building length. And this one I know has been talked about time and time again. From the plan, it looks like it's 15 inches over. So a variance would be required.
Four buildings are too long.
Yes, so a variance for four of those buildings would need to be, would need to be approved by ZBA to increase that to the 36 feet or, you know, to make that. And then, obviously, I mean, this, actually, that just goes for the variances. So that is what, that's the variances that are going to need to be had. I will lay this out and have it in writing and make it much more put together. So everybody here, so you all obviously have a copy of that. Other than that, like I said, I've gone through everything, I've looked at the ordinances. I've looked at what the engineer is saying, I've looked at what our attorney is saying. That's the issues that we have. My next thing, and you know, obviously, there being these couple things that need to be a variance, tonight we could say, yeah, I'm just outright denying it. It would go back to them, and then at some point, it would obviously come back to us, and we're all gonna start this over again. However, looking what I have in front of me, I do think that this is a ZBA issue. I think that this, it would be my opinion that this should be approved and pushed on to ZBA for ZBA to make their decision. That's the next step to keep this moving forward. And that's my opinion. So, I just talked for a long time.
Well, one thing I wanna bring up is the BMJ, our engineers, in January 21st of 25, they did address a lot of the road and side yard and sidewalk and setbacks. And I think this should go along with to the ZBA, because as their report states, "The right-of-way is the project is a private development, there are no dedicated road, street rights of way required." And then, the second one is roadway. The roads are designed as 25 feet back of curb to back of curb. The curbs are non-able valley curbs measuring two feet wide, each for a two curb totaling four feet. The roadway pavement width consists of two 10 and a half feet lanes. The AASHTO minimum requirement for roads with design speeds of less than 40 miles an hour supporting less than 1,500 vehicles per day is two tent with travel lanes. So, they stated here, the proposed plan meets this requirement. Also, the sidewalks. The proposed sidewalks are five feet wide, which meets ADA accessibility standards. The front of the sidewalk is setback five feet from the back of the curb line, which is acceptable. Front yard setback, the front yard setbacks from the back of the curb line to the face of the building have been shown as a minimum of 30 feet. 20 from back of sidewalk. The city planning consultant should provide an interpretation. So that was up for interpretation with the attorney. So, I think that should also be included with, you know, as it for more information.
And I do agree with you. I just think like the expression of just right-of-way, what type of right-of-way? Because our ordinance says different things for, you know, what it would be considered. And for the attorney to come back and say, no, that I think that this is the multifamily residential street, dedicated street, I think we would have to rely on his interpretation of what the ordinance says and what he has in front of him. Again, I don't necessarily think it's a make it or break it thing. I do think that this, the engineer report should go to ZBA as well. But I think ZBA should also, I do think that a variance is needed. Because I don't feel, I don't feel confident only relying on the engineer, just without her saying it to us.
The planner didn't send us feedback on that. She did review all the ordinances, she should have gotten that, whatever, planning or council pack. And the way the ordinance is written, yes, it needs attention. And we tried to, we addressed that, we talked 51 feet. Still, it is what our ordinance says. So, passing that information along to the ZBA, saying where we are, and we have levers, they can look at that. But we still have an ordinance, so we just can't ignore it. And I'd like to change it or whatever it takes, but that should be noted. We did have a professional planner look at that. She gave us the maps, charts, and diagrams and commented on it. So we do have that opinion to consider too.
Right, well, and I think, I mean, ZBA, they have to make their, they have to make their decision. And I do think they have all this information in front of them. Engineer says this, attorney says this, I mean, that's for them to decide.
Right, and I just wanna make sure that her report, the planner is included in it if we're sending all this there, because we paid her to do it. So they should have that information.
And I will, I'm sure I have it somewhere in that bucket. So I'll have to...
I've got it somewhere in my bucket too, so I'll look for it. If I can't find it, I'll make copies for the others tomorrow. It wasn't that long ago that she did it.
I was thinking questions.
It's for transparency, it's all, you know, all information.
As a representative of the fire department, is on-street parking gonna be allowed in here?
It's actually the opposite that you're quiet and we're asking variance if it's not because of guidelines.
I'm just worried about access to the emergency.
Just seeing we have to boost time, but the same exact rule we got approved and the same exact question.
Okay, so you wanna, so you wanna make a motion, Amber, of what you just stated? Or probably wanna do this?
Does anybody else have anything?
Any other members have any questions?
Questioning comments, concerns.
There's only one question, and that was, do you remember talking to Governor Mayor Schneider at the last meeting? He said the process for how this is approved and goes about to ZBA? Just like to make sure, I don't have any problem with anything, it's just fantastic. But there was a process where, I forget exactly what he says. We either approve if this gets done, whether if this gets okay by ZBA, or we deny it, and there it has to go to ZBA pending approval. Now, if that's a technical point of issue for you guys to be concerned with, but...
Well, ZBA is, you get what I have in front of me. And this is essentially what our opinion is and why it's our opinion, and all the variances that are needed. So they will have this information, Mr. Reed.
Your ordinance allows you to get preliminary approval, subject to ZBA variances. Or anybody asks, makes a motion, ZBA variances. Or minor amendments to the plan to conform with the zoning ordinance as requested. And that goes to back to you for final approval, once ZBA or little amendments bring it back.
And I think at this point, the conversation has been had multiple times, just regarding that thing. I don't think there's any more amendments to the plan that can be made without...
These are new amendments that could conform with your recommendations of the attorney. So instead of a 30-foot house, it's a 29-foot house, and now it conforms. Kind of thing, a minor change for final approval. Because this isn't final approval, this is just...
Right, right.
Good.
Does everybody feel we have all the information?
I believe what's been presented to us now, I believe we are, we are good to go.
So we have received all the information that we are gonna get. Kind of talked about it all on one point or another throughout the evening. So the next step is, I would refer this to the ZBA with those particulars. Let them weigh in on it and go open that.
Alright, so I will make a motion that, oh wait, can somebody read? Well, I'm just gonna watch the video again. So I'll make a motion that the preliminary plan is approved on the condition that ZBA, I guess, approve the variances that are needed. Those variances affect the setback requirements, the building height, building length, and the road requirements. I can be more specific and give the, give the ordinance if that's what everybody would like. But I do think that we just talked about it.
Do we have a second on that?
I still would like to know if there is an obligation to build that detention plan. I still would like that question answered, I'm just saying it for the record, so that I know that from last time, and I'll be quiet from here. I would really like to get the opinion on that and all the stuff that I've seen.
Okay, in regards to, can you restate the motion, Amber?
So my motion would be to approve the preliminary plan.
Be approved?
Yeah, the preliminary plan be approved on the condition that ZBA approve variances for the setback requirements for the building height, building length, and the road requirements.
Does everybody understand that?
Yep.
I second that.
Alright, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
I oppose, only because I don't think the neighbors have really gotten any relief, and it just seems like we're ignoring them still. And so, I'm just a protest vote, I don't take personally, guys.
There's nothing wrong with that, everybody's entitled to their opinion.
They've got their opinion, exactly.
Is there any way that...
March out, right?
Yes, now that I know about it, I'll go out there and...
Yeah, I mean, if you keep, I mean, I don't know...
What about the grass? Nobody cares if I can't breathe.
Here's what I would propose on that.
We have the builders here, you know, I think this is a good, I mean, I'll give you a couple. Hold on, one minute, okay? Because I want everybody to be civil, I don't want, I don't want anything going out of hand. Just perfect, because like I said, I'll stop it, we get out of here, I'll be done. Because I don't need this either. The builders are here. You can ask, you know, they're here to listen to you also, okay? That's why they're here. Just like when we did the rezoning, everybody had their questions. You can, you know, ask them about the weeds and what are you gonna do? Because I think also too, there was something in regards to the drive. We talked about that before, when we did the rezoning way back, you know, when we first rezoned it. Asked about where the entranceway is gonna be to the condominiums? You know, rocks kicking up, you know, noise from the equipment, things like that you were talking about. Some type of fence or temporary fence, something up there to help the neighbors out? You know, I think you all wanna work together, okay? That's what I see. You can exchange numbers, you can talk on a personal basis, and whatever, Ronin. You know, so, can we at least do something? I mean, just on this, can you do something about the weeds and just kinda get rid of them?
I'm thinking if we're able to, and I'm thinking it's probably, this process will probably take 30, 60 days. And I'm not sure exactly when it's gonna be completed, but I'm sure even before, you know, whenever it'll be done. So I'm thinking that maybe we should farm that little area this year, and we should have it worked down by a farmer and plant it. And then, it'll be harvested, and that'll be done, and then we can hopefully do what we need to do.
So we're gonna change it back to agricultural?
I'm only proposing that to get rid of the weeds.
It's just, right now, it's zoned as...
Farm it?
I mean, yeah, I mean, are you okay with that?
What are we gonna farm?
So they're trying, wondering something, the easiest thing to plant and grow is pumpkins. Okay, but I mean, something. I then allow them, I mean, if you wanna share space, whatever, and get it a little bit set up, that maybe they can throw some flowers down, or whatever. Just something, I want compromise. I don't wanna, I wanna get phone calls and emails. You understand what I'm saying?
Yeah, I would propose I'll pick up the phone and talk to a few farmers that I know, whichever one says I'll work it.
Absolutely.
I don't know what they're gonna plant, but I'm sure they'll be...
You're here, work with the community, the community will work with you. Let's make this one, being happy build out once we get everything all set, okay? We got that? Are we good? Awesome. What, farming?
Yeah.
They're just gonna put you...
I mean, I think it'd be better than having like true grain coming out.
Exactly, I think it'd be better. Flower it up a little bit, plant a little garden, vegetables. Lot better than five-foot weeds, right?
There's five-foot dandelions right now.
So nobody seems to care about it.
I have allergies to, like I said, my immune system stinks. Anyways, moving on. Alright, there is nothing listed here for unfinished business. So we're good there. Commissar Commissioners, before we adjourn. Mr. Riley, do you have anything? Ms. Garber, do you have anything?
I commented out.
Alright, Ms. Randazzo. Alright, Mr. Weaver?
Well, I'm hearing that, you know, the team is concerned with the planning commission hasn't been doing an adequate job, so we're gonna try to correct that. And it is the planning commission's duty and responsibility to recommend to city council. So we're gonna try to open up that line of communication a lot better and put these things in front of the council, so there's no question that at least they've been discussed. At the planning commission issue, we've had our, you know, points made and recommendations to which we did at our last planning commission meeting, and you will be getting this, we all will, are there on the council, a request for city engineering, for our BMJ, as you said, Mr. Dunhill, shoot the grades. Simple, we're gonna have them to look at that drainage problem. We thought we wanted, that could be part of our prompt, that we have some city instructor issues. Absolutely. So, that's gonna be coming, so that will be brought up at the next planning commission meeting. We're recommending that. What the city council does with that, I don't know, we'll wait and see. But that'll be coming up from June, whatever, beginning of June.
I have one comment, I wish you could do it.
Yeah, so do I. Ms. Mayor? Good, you tell them? Alright, so am I. I'm hungry. And I said, I thank everybody for your comments, I thank you for coming. This is what I wanna see in the future. I wanna see, regardless if we're bumping heads or differences of opinions, that's why we're Americans, that's why we're here. Everybody has a different opinion. Nobody's going to agree on everything. But, on one side, yeah, we're trying to help, we're trying to help the community, trying to keep it a small-town feel. On the other side, we need to build it, we need to bring new revenue into the city. That's something you wanna think of duty when you send your kids to a nice, you know, nice school. That's really all I have to say. I think we're making progress, and I like to make a motion to adjourn at 8 o'clock.
Second half.
Alright, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much, guys. Thank you so much, nice to you all again.